A posting, please. This is the public hearing.
So, trusty Rose is excused tonight. Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Geller.
Here.
Kumbir.
Sure.
Schaefer Weiss.
Here.
McNally.
Here. All right. We're gonna get into-
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center Cambridge Post Office, Hometown News, Village Website, and also published in the Cambridge Newspaper.
Okay. And the purpose of this-
It's hard to hear over here.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Thank you for letting us know. We're gonna get into a hearing here on our budget. Okay. How do you want to proceed with this?
It's a public hearing if there's comments on the budget. People are invited to speak if there's comments and-
Where's Joan? Joan?
Well, no. We've got a couple of board members that are going to speak.
Library Board?
And if you can introduce yourselves.
Have a seat. Yep. If you can introduce yourselves, speak in. Yep, there you go.
Hello?
Yeah. Do you want to get a- We'll get a microphone, couple out too. But you can start, Kristin.
Okay. I'm Kristin Martin, and I'm the school-appointed trustee member for the library board here in Cambridge, and I am a past employee of the library for almost eight years. The library board would like to thank the Audit and Finance Committee for recommending $90,000 for our budget. At this time, we would like the village board to consider increasing it to $95,000 so that we can address the disparity in wages. Due to COVID, the library has lost $5,000 in funding through the rural lending program. If the budget is increased by at least a total of $10,000, we can offset this loss. If the library has granted this request, the money will be used to pay staff wages. Just so that the board is aware, the library wages range from 7:25 an hour for part-time help to 11:33 an hour for a part-time employee with a master's degree in library science. This is compared to the $18 an hour and up starting wages recently given to new village employees. This is an unfair wage disparity, and the village employees who work at the library deserve a living wage. The library serves as a vital cornerstone of the community, and it is the right thing to do. We need to pay all the village employees a living wage. And that's all I have. I'm just, I'm begging and pleading because I really feel it's important that library staff are grossly underpaid compared to not even just village employees. If you look at any other libraries around, we just don't measure up for the work that is done at the library. And I would like to see some increases happen for them.
All right.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration.
All right. Anybody else here on the library? Okay, if you could come up, introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Trendall. I'm the president of the Cambridge Library Board, and I am also here to petition the board, the Finance Committee, for additional funding for our budget. Due to the low wages comparative to other library systems like New Glarus and Sock City who are looking for library directors, we are- our wages are really out of line with what other communities of our size are doing. Kristin pointed out some good items from our actual records saying that 7:25 to $11.33 as the wage is just, is really low, and there is some disparity in equity there. I would also like to say that our budget for this year includes some items that we have not always accounted for in the past, and we need to make sure that we are budgeting for these insurance costs that are potentially out there. We don't want to be caught in a place where we're having these expenses and we have no money to fund those. So, that is all I have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jennifer. I see that we have two additional board member, or one board member, and the director of the library. Sue, do you have anything to say?
I didn't sign up to speak, so I'm just here for any questions.
Okay.
And I will ask anybody who is here, if you're speaking or not, to please sign in on the registration form at the table so that we know who's in attendance for our records.
All right. I'm gonna go to, Chris, do you have anything? You're the liaison between the Village of Cambridge and our library.
And this is the public hearing portion. The village board will be speaking on the budget when we get into our regular agenda.
All right. You can hold off then. Is there anybody else that would like to speak about the budget? Okay, fair warning. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Looking for number four.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. All right. Okay, we're gonna move on now to our village board agenda. We're all here. Nobody's left, so I think we can dispense with that.
We will still do the roll call.
All right.
Call to order.
All right, okay. I'm calling the meeting in order. And roll call, please.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Geller.
Here.
Kumbir.
Yep.
Schaefer Weiss.
Here.
Rose. McNally.
Here. Okay, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Lisa, has this meeting been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Hometown Bank, the Cambridge Post Office, and the Village Website.
Okay. All righty. And we're gonna get into public appearances. Is there anybody that would like to talk about something? And we've got a lot of items on our agenda. I'll start over here. If you could come up to the table, sir. So you've got two minutes for this, this part here. It's fine, it's fine.
We are both residents of the Kenset Way, the Kenset Vineyards over here. We were here the last time at the meeting with issues that we have. Again, we have to announce that we do have an attorney that's representing us due to a lot of issues with the village, the builder. We've had many conversations with Lisa-
Can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Brendan Newman.
And I'm Tim Phelps.
716 Kenset Way. And we closed on June the 8th this year, and we have had nothing but issues. And again, going back to the issues that we had at the last time, we've talked many times with Lisa Mohn on the building inspector Scott Jelling, who has, Jelling, who has, I believe, we believe, and our inspector believes, that has rubber stamped a lot of issues in our home. And we need to come up with some resolution to this. Other than that, our next issue is, we now have, since our last meeting, we have nine houses that have now gone up in our subdivision. So, and that being said, is there drainage issue? We're confused on the drainage issues, the flows, the drain fields, the- because we live on the bottom of that hill, and I'm sorry to say, but shit rolls downhill. So, somebody please tell me, we've already had water in our basement because of lack of drainage. We have the drain field behind our house that is a well that's gonna only do nothing but come into our backyards. So somebody please tell me that this is gonna be corrected, or where it's gonna go, because I believe that Vulcan has done nothing to build any drainage issues or drainage reservoirs going outside of the subdivision. And my biggest concern, and I'm not sure why I'm dealing with this, but I'm thinking that if everything rolls downhill, the farmer behind us is gonna get the backlash of all of this stuff.
Which will be just to our north.
So-
Sorry.
Well, we're coming in, we only have two minutes. That's all we can allot here. We have the meeting scheduled for this next week, correct? That's to go out there.
Yes, and can we please have this happen because it's been, I know, I know, I know due to scheduling issues, but things in our house are getting worse, not better.
Okay. I think we're there, what is it?
Tuesday at noon, correct?
Tuesday noon.
Tuesday at noon.
Yes. We'll be there, I know that-
And my suggestion is that, you know, if we're bringing in the building inspector who we believe rubber stamped things, and so does our inspector, he needs to be there, without a doubt.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you for coming in front of us and speaking.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Tim, Brenda. Okay. I saw hands being raised over here. Okay. I'll go with, I guess, Nick. Is this on the agenda, Nick, or?
No, this is coming. I'm standing out, how y'all doing? You can see y'all. I got copies of the statement I'm gonna read if anybody would like it. On the board are back here, there. So I know I'm on two minutes, I'll just get to it. But I have concerns about the notes as published in the agenda for our last meeting. Specifically, I'm taking issue with the omission of Blake Solenberger's public comment, as well as my own public comment. Some of the content of my public comment was misannotated as occurring during our conversations on the bike trail, and a lot of things we're conversed about on the bike trail. The misannotation complicates the reality of our conversation. It doesn't convey the actual context of our conversation. I would like the board to recognize that a stop work order on the developer of the vineyard is not something I required or asked for in relation to our conversations on the bike path. It was merely a mentioning of previously given instruction to the village per stormwater mitigation issues in the village. When? May 5th, 2021. Who? Mike Reiber, Ron Class from Denofrio, Lisa Mohn, Village of Cambridge, Seth Williams, Ideal Builders, Jason Tuggle and Teresa Nelson, both of Dane County. What? After a perusal of the land in question in the western portion of the development, the county agreed the plan as written is nothing like the plan as built, and that extends to the entirety of the development. Their recommendation, because they have no teeth as the county, was for the village to issue a stop work order immediately on all the development in the vineyards until the developer could resurvey the properties in question as built and develop a plan to address the shortfalls. It would also appear that Mike was misquoted as saying the comments were made to him alone, but Mike actually conveyed was that the comments were made to the group as a whole, including the village clerk, Lisa Mohn. If anybody would like to contest what I'm talking about or see for themselves, I'd like to infer to them into two hours, 25 minutes, and 40 seconds into the village board meeting that is posted onto the YouTube channel, Cambridge Channel 12, or something like that. Would anybody like a copy of what I just read?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we also ask for a stop work order as well? Because this is all distributed into our-
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so.
So, the main issue I had was, I didn't ask for a stop work order on the vineyard. I had mentioned that they told you to put one on them already.
Okay.
So that was my main.
All right. Thank you, Nick. All right, Frank, I think you had your name, your hand up. Frank Peregrin, did you want to speak? Public appearance?
I would like to take two minutes, times about five issues.
Frank, can you introduce yourself first?
My name is Frank Peregrin, and I'm one of the developers, also the owner of Cambridge Winery. And I've got a number of issues that were raised by looking at the board minutes from the previous meeting, such as stop work orders without any proper notice or posting to let the parties that were affected. I mean, these would be ruled invalid without having proper notice of saying, "We want to discuss whether or not we should stop Vulcan the Builder." Sounds like a superhero, doesn't it? Or Cambridge Development, or anybody else. So I think that was improper notice, number one. Number two is, I don't think you understand, anybody here understands the stormwater issue. And I've brought a number of handouts of previous CSMs and current proposed CSMs and stormwater plans I would like to hand to you and walk through those. So you can see for yourself, here's where we are. The stormwater issues that Jason Tuggle was concerned about were two. The first was whether or not there was proper drainage behind some of the homes, in particular over where the condos in Winery Way were. And the answer was, yes, it was there, but he couldn't see it in his satellite photo. So he satisfied himself that that was done. The other was, has to do with where the original bike path was supposed to go. It was supposed to go on top of a berm that doesn't exist. The berm was supposed to separate nature's water from distillery water. And distillery water needed to go to the stormwater ponds because we need to trap any excess runoff from parking lots and roofs and things. Nature's water can just go its merry way, the way it's always gone. So it only affects the western side of the winery property and the distillery. We met with Jason and agreed to build a berm that would replace what was gonna be the bike path. Since the bike path wasn't built, the berm wasn't built, is what, where it was originally went.
I'm sorry, who's Jason?
Jason Tuggle is a Dane County stormwater management guy.
Okay, thank you.
He's a guy who approves both the plans in advance, as well as comes out afterwards and inspects.
Okay, Frank, I have to call the time, because it's two minutes.
That's one issue.
Okay.
I mean, I've got like three issues here.
I understand, but everybody gets two minutes. I can't do, I can't let people go on. I'm sorry.
I don't understand a stop work order on stormwater plan. When it, when, we weren't even given notice that this was an issue. We've been working on this for months, and Lisa's aware of it. She was in on meetings with us, with your attorney. You're spending money with an attorney.
I don't think we're gonna-
And you're ignoring whatever it is. You know, we've got plans filed. We sent them in in September. We're waiting for an approval or a response from Dane County. And now we want, what do you want me to stop? That's what I want to know.
Okay.
When am I supposed to stop?
We would have to have you on the agenda. This is just public-
Well, put me on the agenda and give proper notice.
Okay.
And I'll come back.
All right. We can, you can, we can do that.
Over requesting that, please, sir.
Okay, all right.
But they're, oh, that's a different meeting, nevermind.
It's just public appearance, okay.
And I can be in contact with people. I need specific things on the agenda, so specific issues, you know, so Frank, I can touch base with you, but it's, it has to be- I will, I will, Frank.
And all of a sudden, we're getting all this crap in the government. You know? Stop work on what? You know, you guys are out of your mind. You don't even know what you're fucking-
Mark.
Okay, all right. We're gonna close it there. All right, thank you. Any other public appearances? Charles?
And I only got two minutes here, so I'll make it quick. I just want to say I love Cambridge, and no one wants Main Street to be more successful, I think, than I do. As you guys know, I own several buildings down here, and I've brought a lot of people to Cambridge that want to see us succeed. So, my apologies that I have a conflict of interest tonight, but I am committed for the next three months that I'm here. And I want to make my phone number and my accessibility to anyone that would like to meet with me or talk to me about the buildings on Cambridge and what the plans of those are. I'd like to also ask to be a part of any meetings and planning commission. I know there's, December 13 is the next one. If we can move that forward, I have a potential tenant that would like to move into the woodshed with a three-year, and a three-year, and a three-year option. I've met with Scott, which is your building inspector. We both agree that there's a safety issue for the glass on the front of Main Street. I'd like to reestablish the woodshed, which was 101 to 107. It used to be six buildings and get another entrance in there, and I will foot the bill despite the grant not working for woodshed. But I would like to keep it on the radar of you guys that I would like to see apartments over Main Street, any way, shape, or form. I'd also like to put in public comment note that anything that happens at the Mauster Project, I brought several developers into Cambridge in the past that would like to do multifamily, 32 units, 32 units, and 32 units, and possibly clean up that site. So I'd like to make that done. I've seen it in the newspaper last week, and I've been working on this for seven years. And I'd like, you know that. Also that, I'd like to introduce Igor. I have to leave, I have a meeting in there, but Igor Lativas, he's gonna be here. He's actually helping me open Plow Restaurant. And there's a lot of rumors going around, and I want to disperse those. But, you know, hearing that my liquor license is gonna be taken away because Plow's not open during the middle of a pandemic, we're open. You guys want to help us get open? We're here, we need staff, we need you guys' help. And anything we can do for Main Street, I'm here, I'm fully committed. So there's my two minutes. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Charles. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak, public appearance? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Let's go with the approval of the consent agenda. Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion, question? What that includes, village board's minutes, Water and Sewer Committee?
So with this, with Nick's controversy with the minutes, how do we handle that? We just-
I just wanted a moment just to say it.
Right, okay.
That was a really long conversation, you know, and Frank's in contact with you before this because he's damn hot, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And I just wanted to clear that I didn't ask for a stop work order on the bike path.
Right, okay.
I offered that as a solution to provide context.
Okay.
And that's kind of what got lost in the notes.
All right.
So I really wanted to acknowledge.
Okay.
So you don't want a note in the minutes?
It does, I'm assuming that, you know, public comments are gonna be included. I was kind of surprised when mine and someone else's public comment wasn't in there. It removed a lot of context to the conversation. And a lot of this was mostly for Frank, because I knew he was gonna be here and be performing, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, we've got a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? He carries. Okay. Let's get on to President's Report. I'm just gonna touch briefly upon something that just happened less than an hour ago. And I want to thank our village forester, Jay Weiss. We do have a new tree. It was planted, and it's actually right next to the plow. And this is, what kind of a tree was this? It was a-
A Siberian spruce.
Yes.
Speaking from Siberia.
Serbian?
Serbian spruce.
Sorry.
And what I got out of that is, we have 174 species of trees here in the Village of Cambridge, and we've got more species than any other municipality in the state of Wisconsin. So, that was planted, that will be there, and it's a live tree, and it's got lights on it. And not to be confused, because there's a general lighting for the tree up at Veterans Park. Is that next week, Lisa? Okay. So, wanted to thank Jay, and Chris, you were part of that, so tip of the hat to you as well. All right, thank you. Library Board. Okay, Chris, what can you tell us about your meeting?
So the meeting was November 10th, and there was an approval of the treasurer's report. Talked about the Friends of the Library hosting their annual craft fair that was well-attended. And then I would say the great majority of the rest of the meeting was a thorough discussion of the budget, which Jennifer and Kristin have already highlighted a lot of the issues that were discussed. So I think that the main discrepancy was, well, $20,000 was asked by the director of the library, Joan, and much less was given because of the $5,000 that the Jefferson County for the Rural Lending Library is usually, they usually have that in the budget, they don't. So there is a discrepancy. So there's a very thorough discussion about that. And I, at that time, took a lot of notes and got information, and the idea was to have Jennifer and Kristin come, they volunteered. And that was the majority of the, of the meeting.
All right. Okay, all right, thank you. We're gonna be talking a little bit more about that when we get into our budget here.
Sure.
Okay. Any questions for Chris? Library matters? All right, moving on, village office updates. Lisa?
A lot going on. We did have the two new employees started, so doing all the paperwork, retirement, health, dental enrollments, and everything for them. Tax prep going on, special assessments, past due water and sewer bills, trash recycling, the assessments for road projects and so forth. Chrissy's been getting into the county. Election notices have started for the April election, and packets are put together, so I do have those for those of you who are up and others who may be interested. Nomination papers can start being done December 1st. We also had our annual maintenance and testing of the election equipment in preparation for the February primary. Working on the fire commission referendum. We did finish all of the PSC submittals for the solar project. Chrissy's been working with the water department on scheduling meter change outs with some properties that we've been having issues with, reading their meters and equipment. So we're getting those all updated. Working with the attorney on motions from the last meeting, the issues, the distillery, Mauster site, bike trail, and so forth. And the packet is the draft of a legal RFP to go out for legal services for the village. Also, a developer's agreement with Tony Bunacontro for the Inon Main for the WIDE grant, it's needed. So I did send out earlier today a copy of that, and it is, I did distribute that as well.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Lisa? Sounds like we got, as usual, a fair amount happening.
In addition to all our data, eh?
Thank you, Lisa and Chrissy, for everything you do. There's a lot going on, I appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? To the legal attorney, Lisa, other than the trail and, can you list the things that you've discussed with the attorney, so we know what's going on?
There's a lot of things. They've been reviewing the developer's agreement, the legal RFP.
Does it have anything to do with our issues with Vulcan and anything else?
There was some discussion on the stop order, but we have been meeting with the building inspector and meeting with you next week on that.
Has anybody been replaced to replace Scott Jelling as rubber stamping the inspection?
We're working on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Lisa. Let's move on to bills. Just got them back. What can you tell us, Chrissy?
First round was $11,569.44. Second round done today, $22,126.90, for a grand total of $53,206.70.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them out.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
No, Mr. Public Works Director, looks like one of our trucks got repaired again. Well, that's one that's coming up for end of its lifespan, isn't it? 2022?
It is.
Yeah. What was fixed on it? Just out of curiosity?
Brakes.
Yeah. Definitely need the brakes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that the F-450?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw, I was looking at that too. All right, so. Yeah, cost $2,600, and then we still have to put another $5,000 into it. Or is that a different vehicle?
Different vehicle.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions regarding our bills? All right, we got a motion and a second. No further questions, roll call, please.
Christie Whitmore.
Yes.
Geller.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss.
Yes.
Rose.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay. Going to move on now to new business. And the Village of Cambridge Resolution 2021-12, adopting the 2022 annual village operating
Do you want a motion first, and then we can discuss it, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose we can do it that way. Motion to approve it.
I wanted to make a motion regarding the library, though, to ask that money be reinstated into the budget.
Okay, we got to, first of all, we've got to have a motion here on this resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-12, adopting the 2022 annual village operating budget.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right. Now we can talk.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Chris?
So yes, I would like to make a motion to reinstate at least $5,000 to the library budget. As was already discussed, the primary reason being to have more wages go to the library staff. It seems entirely fair that they should have a living wage, so that the library director can, you can't hear me? Everybody can hear me?
Take off your mask.
I said it's entirely appropriate to have more money going to the library staff, so that they can have more of a living wage. It's clear in looking at the numbers that they're just really not, it's not fair, it's an equity issue, and the money would go for extra wages.
Okay. I want to bounce this one back. Lisa, when you and I had talked about this, you had come up with a strategy that maybe was a little creative.
Yeah, there's two ways to approach it. If we amend the budget, the money has to come from somewhere else. So it could come out of, we did put a lot of our extra money into roads, it could come out of the roads to do it. Or if it's, and looking back, they had requested the funds due to loss of revenue for ARPA because of COVID, getting ARPA funding for it. So that could be a different, you know, it could be a budget giving $5,000 more and taking $5,000 from the village budget to cover it. Or if it were $5,000 of ARPA funds, we could revisit the motion, all of the ARPA funds this year were going to the media replacement. We could take $5,000 less toward the media replacement and give $5,000 ARPA funds. The difference, being ARPA funds is a one-time, that would be a one-time payment due to loss of revenue, due to COVID, amending the budget would be our base rate then moving forward in the future.
Just a quick question about that, Lisa, and I know there's more ARPA funds coming in the spring, the library could still apply for the, for extra funds at that time? Okay, so that wouldn't be affected. Okay, thanks.
Do you have any outline of how the wages would look more equitable?
I know Joan has said that, as the budget stands right now, she can only afford to do, sorry Joan, that she could afford 3% of a raise, but she can bring that up to 5% for, I don't know if it's across the board or not, that I don't know. I know that she has said that she will increase wages if more money is given in the budget. That much is clear. Exactly how that shakes out, I don't know.
Have you looked at the overall budget holistically and saw areas where you could move dollars, like we're doing right now? We're moving dollars from one area to another area. Because this is such an important issue, are there other areas of the budget where you can move dollars towards wages as well?
Well, we talked about, there's $118,000 in a reserve fund. $40,000 of those are, it's apparently untouchable. I mean, it's four projects that come up, and that money is earmarked. The remainder of the money Joan has said she may have to dip into if there's no extra money given for the budget, and that's, there's a real hesitancy to do that.
For what reason?
Well, that money is going to be used, as I understand it, primarily for the payout for her retirement, which I think is coming up in 2023. So that money is earmarked for that.
$118,000 is earmarked?
Less $40,000.
Less $40,000.
So that's only the reserve and-
Doesn't all be toward the insurance payout or the sick time payout. It's capped 1,000 hours at the current rate, is what is paid for the, into a health savings account of her retirement.
So a 3% increase is really just a cost of living increase, correct? And we've already surpassed the cost of living increase for the village at 5%. So we're actually paying less for cost of living for library employees, and they're actually not increasing their wage at all.
Yes, well, as I understand it, that's what, that is what can be afforded, I mean-
I would recommend going back and looking at ARPA funds and make a real change, like a real request.
For more than $5,000, is what you're saying?
Yeah, like work on the wage, figure out the cost, and come back with that dollar amount to make an equitable increase.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I agree with you.
And that can be arranged, I guess, for the fall and then potentially in-
There's a lot of good employees, though, that are part-time and make hardly any money.
But I do strongly suggest looking at the library budget for sustainability of that amount in future budget.
I think that's critical. Yeah, I agree.
Because that, this is the ARPA fund, and that's how we're going to get it done. That needs to move forward with the libraries, understanding that perhaps the budget needs to be looked at. There are, there's a lot of data on the services that people use at the library. And so potentially, you can see, this isn't necessarily something that's being utilized. We can dip into our reserve funds, this is how, this is the ugly reality of doing the finance and the budget and looking at, you know, if, I think the most important thing is the staff having livable wages in accordance with the rest of the village.
Absolutely.
So if you have to cut back in other areas to make that happen, I think that's a reasonable request.
Lisa, if we were to go with that ARPA strategy, is that going to affect that, the screen that we had talked about?
We could place it on the next agenda. It's the media for the filters. We could take, put it on the next agenda, take $5,000 from what was going to go to that and give it to the library in its place.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Can I donate that $5,000 to the media? Is there a way that I can donate $5,000 to the village for that media money to be displaced in the library? Is that legal or possible?
Maybe the library. I don't know.
Can you get back to me on that? I'm trying to be, I'm the one that's really courage for it, and I don't want to disenfranchise anyone that's actually working for our community and doing a good job. So if there is a way to do that, just let me know. I didn't mean to interrupt.
All right, thank you.
If I didn't mean to interrupt.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well-
Do you want to come back with, like, a sense of what the wages would look like? And then a dollar amount, and then we can work from there? And we can still amend the budget?
Well, I think we have to get the budget in, don't we?
Well, we can pass the budget in, again, if it's ARPA funds, it's not the budget for-
But we don't know what dollar amount we're looking at yet. We don't necessarily know what dollar amount we're adjusting for.
So the ARPA funds could be on the next agenda.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so we'll put the ARPA funds and the request then from the library onto the next agenda? Is that it?
And Chris, do you feel comfortable working with the library board on finding a dollar solution for the hourly wages?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I think if that can be done, absolutely.
Looking at me, Chris, are you here with what Carla said?
Okay, Carla said, Chris, are you comfortable working with the library to find other areas, perhaps, for wage increases in addition to the ARPA funding? And I said yes.
Well, specifically, I was, yes, that, but also, I wanted to know the dollar amount that you would be increasing for the employee. What numbers are we looking at? So if we're going up from, there's a, looking, because I saw the wages, which started this conversation, and there's different, I don't want to say price points, but there's different, they kind of, it's scattershot. And so I want to see what an adjustable amount would look like for everyone. You guys are the content experts on that, so if you could bring that back to the board and we could get a number, then we can work with that in the budget.
So you're saying each wage, each person who works?
Right?
Yeah. There's five? I think there's more than that. If you're including the two pages, that two high school?
Three.
Like six?
We have five part-time and full-time staff and three pages, they're all very part-time.
So eight? Eight total? Okay.
Okay, so we can get this done for the next meeting, and we can have that discussion. I want to thank Nick for, I don't know how we would handle it, but being willing to make a $5,000 contribution for the media replacement that we do need on the water and sewer. So that, it's kind of like we're taking this one off the table as terms of the budget. Are there any other questions that we have regarding the budget? Eric, any observations? No? No, okay, all right. So we have to, we have to approve this.
Yeah.
So anybody care to make a motion?
There is a motion.
We've got that motion in a second. We are going to certainly need to have a roll call then.
Geller?
Yes.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss?
Yes.
Rose?
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitmore?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right. So the budget has been approved, and it has passed. So want to thank the members of the Audit Finance Committee, Carla, Eric. You've done a lot of, a lot of hard work to get this, so appreciate it very much. Yes, yes, I do want to thank the staff, both Lisa and Chrissy, because I know you've been working on it. I think Barb's even-
We have a special guest there.
Yep, and tip of the hat. Okay, let's move on then. Request for proposal, municipal attorney services. Lisa?
I do have a draft in your packet. As you know, Mary Belling has expressed that she is stepping away from the municipal, so she has reviewed, good awkward, I said, Mary, you're retiring, but will you review this for me? She has looked at it, made a couple little minor changes to what was in the packet, but is supportive of the proposal we put together. The goal would be to get it out in the next week or so, get responses, but before Christmas, so that the board could act early January, and we could get legal counsel on board. We've kind of been using Mary for some things. We have two different firms that we've been using for special projects, and it's all time to wrap it all up and move forward.
Okay.
Do we think that we have enough time? I mean, do you think, I have down December 23rd, it's less than a month away to have-
Yeah, I think most of the firms are used to putting these together and-
Rather quickly.
Yeah, so.
I agree with you, we need something.
Yeah, and I, looking at a lot of other, I had samples from other municipalities, that seemed about the timeframe, so.
We're going to discuss this, we got a motion.
I will make a motion to, am I making a motion to request for proposal?
Yeah, to approve the request for proposal.
To approve the request for proposal for municipal attorney services?
I will second that.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, so I have a question for Lisa. In the, in the RFP, it says that there's going to be a committee that makes the decision. Does that specify who specifically?
No, typically, this would probably go to the joint law, you know, our version, our side of the joint law, or it could go to personnel, we can determine who would be on that committee. We could take the chairs of the two committees and the village president, so we can determine that, who would be on that committee.
Is that something we have to do tonight?
We only have to do it tonight.
You have to do it next meeting, though, I think.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea, we don't know yet, what this is going to, the expense would be to have somebody?
Nope.
You and I talked about it, I can't see this being done for less than $15,000.
Oh, definitely not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put it out and see.
Would this attorney have a more active role than Mary Belling, who was more of a-
Yeah.
Advisory?
And next on the agenda, we, Christie Whitmore had asked, and it was included in here, is the expectation that they would come to village board meetings and so forth as well.
Okay, any other questions? We're just asking for a proposal, so I guess we don't have any amounts yet.
Nope.
We can just go with the voice vote. All those in favor of sending out the RFP for municipal attorney services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, he carries. All right, moving on, item C underneath new business, development agreement, Cambridge Inn on Main.
And I had sent this out to you, I also distributed hard copies. This is the last step in the WIDEC proposal for, or the grant application for the Inn on Main. They do need, before they can disburse money to him, a developer's agreement. This was a, I used, based off of a sample draft from WIDEC. Mary Belling is reviewing it. Tony has reviewed it, is fine with it. So a motion could be to accept it upon approval of Mary Belling.
I'll make a motion to accept upon approval from Mary Belling, the developer's agreement for the Cambridge Inn on Main.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? Questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He carries. Okay, let's go to item D, authority to purchase a heater for well number two not to exceed $3,200.
I'll take it if you want, Mark.
Yep, I was going to ask you to, Ted.
There's a heater in the, I believe the salt area, is that correct, Chris?
That's correct.
And salt is very hard on heaters, so every so often, we have to replace them. This time, we're going to, we need to replace the heater plus gas piping that's rotted out. And it needs to be done as soon as possible, because that has to stay warm, we don't need to, there's water there under pressure, and we don't need those pipes to freeze. We want our chemical feed equipment to continue working the way it's supposed to, so. And Chris has a bid for $3,200 to get this replaced, and it needs to be done as soon as possible, so.
All right.
I think we need to give them the go-ahead to get this done.
You care to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to purchase a heater for well number two not to exceed $3,200.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss?
Yes.
Rose?
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitmore?
Yes.
Geller?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. Okay, we're going to take care of that. Let's move on. Cambridge Oakland Wastewater Commission Treatment Plant Issues, item E, door knockers. Recommendation from the Water and Sewer Committee.
How that was from, is it COWC, or how do you want it? We talked about that last, last meeting, and I think they're going to order a total of 1,500 or 2,500, I can't remember the total amount. And then we're going to, there's, Steve Stross has talked to the superintendent of schools, and he's, he, or she has- and he's, he, or she has people that will be able to hang those door knockers on, on the doors in both Oakland and Cambridge.
What are these door knockers going to be saying?
There is a copy in the packet. Here's a hard copy as well.
The big thing is, is wipes and stuff like that are just raising all sorts of heck with our.
Yeah.
I think especially once COVID.
With our pumps and, and then it really raises heck with down at the water treatment plant.
Okay, so it can say that it's flushable, but it's.
It's not.
It's not flushable and it's giving us all kinds of complications.
I like the three Ps, by the way.
Wakala?
I like the three Ps. I think I would bump up the font on that a little bit.
And Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe COWC said they would pay for this, but they are just asking our permission to put it on residents' doors.
And then Steve is, Steve is going to, Steve Strauss will coordinate that with the school to get these things hung up.
Is this your verbiage? Like, is this, this is from the department?
From, no, that came from Steve Strauss and COWC.
Steve Booth? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions here? So we need, we don't have a motion on this one yet, do we?
No, we don't.
Okay, anybody care to make a motion to authorize the use of door knockers? We're not paying for them, but to be able to put those onto the residents' door handles?
I will make a motion to authorize these door knockers on.
A second.
Okay, all right. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. All right. We'll give that back to Steve Strauss and thank him for getting that taken care of. Okay, going to move on to the Fire Commission. We had our meeting here on the 18th of November. There's three things I want to just talk about. First one, Bob Salaw, who was the director of the EMS, has retired. He has stepped down. He, he will be working through the end of the year, and then he will be available for 12 weeks for consulting work into 2022. He felt that this was the time to retire. He had some health issues. And the commission accepted his resignation, so that has just occurred. We have, Bob, before he left, had been looking for an assistant director. There was an individual that was identified, I think there were three. But this person, Paul Blount, is from Palmyra. Now, he lives down in Janesville. And he is the assistant, and he had just been promoted to acting EMS director. We have to have an acting director because there are medical reports that need to be filed. So he will be doing that. He's a nice guy, young guy. He is, in Palmyra, they have the EMS and the fire department and the, what's that fire? Oh, and police are all together. So he is licensed in all three. He'd like to keep his licensing for the police, but he won't be using it, so that's what we have. Okay, those are the two items. They are, oh, Chris?
Just a quick correction for the record. He does not live in Janesville, he lives in Lynch and Eva.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected, I'm sorry. I think he's talking about possibly moving here now, so, but we don't know.
Then you're still looking for a director then, correct?
No, no. He is the, he's the acting director. And for a period of time here and probably will be.
The director at some point.
Yeah, he will be the director.
I see, I got it.
What's his name?
Paul Blount, B-L-O-U-N-T. What I could do, if you would like, is I could ask him to come before us and kind of give us an update similar to what we have.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I'd like that.
All right, I will do that. The, one minor item, and we're going to be talking here as well. The fire department does want, or, yeah, to ask the Cambridge Foundation for a foundation gift for an upcoming payment on the fire truck. So it's $73,000, so we'll be doing that. Then we spent a fair amount of time talking about the fire station, fire and EMS station. And there's, there's various numbers that have been kind of pushed around. You might recall last year, April, we had a referendum question, and at that time, it talked about it being 6.5 million. To build that station now, we're being advised that it's going to be 7.1. There are two other alternatives that came up. One was for 5.9 million, and that was about 21,000 square foot, eliminating a couple bays. And then there was a proposal in there at 6.3 million, and that's removing one apparatus bay and then moving it into the back area to inside. And that square footage would be about 24,000 square foot. The.
Could I ask, what was the original proposal for?
The original proposal that is now at 7.1 million was the project that was put forward back in April.
We asked for some point.
I don't think I know what the square footage was.
Oh.
Uh, I, I don't have that, Ted. I don't know what, what those plans were. In fact, I don't have any plans, which is a concern. I know that you've raised that, and I've told them that. I don't know if they're trying to get the money first and then build it or, or what. But I, I did raise that as a, as a concern.
That you don't have plans for us to see?
We don't have plans.
Right.
But there is an amount. I, I think that this is something that's going to have to go to the voters. I've said this before and I'll say it again. I don't think that commission, I'm part of it, but I don't think that commission should have the authority to bind the five municipalities for, for that kind of expenditure. And I don't think that this board should have the authority to bind the residents of Cambridge in the amount of, and this is informal because it hasn't been, it hasn't gone through financial due diligence, but our share, I'm being told, would be $1,575,630.
Over 20-year period.
That's what we have.
That's right.
So where we are right now, the town of Christiana is going to be meeting about this. There was some confusion regarding the date. And we had talked, Lisa, you had kind of brought this up.
Yeah. The commission had stressed that we needed an answer, that language had to be to the Conys by December 8th, to be placed as a referendum in the spring. That date is actually for the February primary. The date for the April election is January 25th. So we do have time. It doesn't have to be done right now, approved right now. I did reach out to our financial advisors. With the holidays, I have not been able to talk to them yet. I know last time they did bump our dollar amount for the referendum up a little bit to include costs for bonding that we would incur. We'd want that as part of the costs and so forth. So we could, they will be getting us information, but we could then have them prepare our final cost, what it would be with bonding, what it would cost homeowners and so forth.
I, you know, the commission needs to try to sell this to the public, Mark, because if, the longer we drag, drag this out, the more it's going to cost the taxpayers. You know, we're already at 7.3 or whatever it is. And we had it at 6.5 before, and.
If we had it at 6.5.
I don't know.
And we sent it out, yeah, but we sent it out for referendum at 6.5. It failed. A year goes by, and we just had this conversation, the last board meeting, that we wanted it, if we were going to send it out for referendum, it was going to be worth sending out for referendum, but you're essentially coming back with 6.3? So I, I remember talking to Wyatt, who was sitting where Eric was sitting, and saying that we wanted it, Cambridge's amount, to be below 1.5 because otherwise we're asking for the same referendum. And then you go to the meeting and you come back with 6.3 and Cambridge pays 1.5. And that referendum at 6.3 was dying. There was no second for it until you seconded it. So the board had a conversation, and then you went to fire and commission, and where did that, where did that conversation go from your board to that fire commission?
I understand that, but what you, you were, very few people that were at that meeting were there three years ago.
Okay.
When this issue came up three years ago, Carla, I was asked about it by the commission, and I made it very clear that whatever the amount is, this has to go to the residents, taxpayers.
I, I agree.
Okay, and it's not what we are coming up with for numbers. It's what they are willing to accept and pay. I said that three years ago and I still stand behind that.
But Christiana was coming in below 6.3. Cambridge wanted to come in below 6.3. Gene says 6.3, and nobody approves it until, until you do. But your own board said they didn't want 6.3.
I approved it because it was the only number. I know that Rockdale was not going to say anything because it was less than the six, or less than what was originally put out for bid this last spring on the referendum question. So Rockdale wasn't going to say anything, neither was Lake Mills. Christiana is going to meet about it tomorrow. That was as soon as they could get it, so there we have it.
But we're still going out for a referendum that we already went out for a year ago.
I understand.
Yeah, I, I agree with Carla. 6.3, I think is just, is too close to what already failed. And I think it has a, a high risk of failing again. And actually, if you, if you think about it, I think that's kind of a disservice to the firefighters because when it fails again, and we're going to wait a whole nother year for them to get their station. I think 5.9 is more palatable. I think people will respond to that. It's something they can afford. At least it's in a, you know, it's a substantial decrease from 6.5. I think that has a higher chance of passing the referendum, so I could get behind 5.9, but 6.3 is just, I think it's going to fail again.
I, I also want some assurances about the change orders and the winterization. And then if we pick 5.9 or, or whatever the dollar, like, even if it's 6.3, I, I don't want this ballooning and then still having to try to find the money because if we set the amount and then the builder decides to make changes or however that's going to work out, because that's not clear to me, I don't want to see this going up to 7.1 and then 8.5 and then something else, and we still have to find those dollars. I want, if these are the dollars, then these are the dollars.
Carla, I raise those arguments, not this meeting, the meeting before.
I know, because we've talked about them here. But I don't feel like they were answered by the builder that I've heard.
Well.
Unless you've heard differently.
No, what I can tell you about the builder is I made it very clear that should this pass the referendum, that before we actually sign any kind of a contract, I want us to be putting this out again for a fresh review with other builders. Now, there's a, you can get into the nuances between a construction manager and a general contractor, but it's still a price for this. So I want to make sure that should this go through for referendum approval and we've got an amount, then we go back to other bidders and see what they can come in with.
Okay.
All right, I didn't make friends with the, with the individual that was there. I think he even threatened not to come to any more meetings, if I'm not mistaken.
Mark, he's got a lot of time invested in it also.
I get that, but I also know that when you're only dealing with one number, I, I'm sorry, I.
But we don't always take the lowest number either.
No, but I, I would assume that we're going to have qualified builders with, with some history.
Well, it's got to be written that way in the, for the bid proposal.
But anyway, that's, I, I did that because I made that clear. Now, there was no motion on that, there was no approval or anything, but they understand where I'm at.
Well, I appreciate that.
So I, it kind of, tomorrow, we'll, I'll go to the meeting. I'm, I'm planning on it. It's at nine o'clock, if anybody is interested, Town of Christiana.
Why didn't you support 5.9 or?
Because that's the number that Gene Capner came up with.
5.9?
No, the 6.3. That was his proposal.
Right, but why didn't that die and then come back at 5.9 for a second motion?
That's what he was supporting, that's where, you know.
I know, but nobody else was supporting it.
Okay.
So I'm wondering why you didn't support the 5.9?
I went with, with Gene Capner as the chairman of the commission. That's what his proposal was? Okay, let's, let's bring it back out there to the residents.
So is there room to disagree with this number now that it's out there? I, I feel like you kind of put the board in an awkward position where we had this discussion and now it's coming back and I, I just wish this was like considered or.
That, that's what we have. I, I don't have any glib response for that. That's what Gene wanted to go with. I gave it a second because I want this to go.
That's the part, that's the part, the second, that I'm having an issue with.
Well, with, there are only three of us that were working.
I know, but you're one of them!
Well, I understand that.
But Carla, let's look at what Cambridge's responsibility is. Put the 6.3 or whatever aside. You're only responsible for 25% of that, period.
I understand that, but we also had a meeting where we said we wanted to fall below that. So why are we having a meeting discussing it and then that conversation is, has no meaning after the fact?
Well, keep, costs keep going up daily.
I understand that, but plans can change to meet the dollar amount.
Well, that, I don't recall, Carla, that we ever had a number. In fact, I know we didn't.
We never had a final number, but we talked about it going to referendum, that it should have fallen below that, the number of the previous referendum.
Well, it did.
It's going to come through it.
It did. I mean, it's 6.3 to 6.5 is not a big decrease, but you look at what's been cut out, but it's come down. We didn't have a number. So I, you know, Gene made the motion, I seconded it.
Okay.
So it goes back to the voters. That's, you know, that's what we have.
So bottom line is going back to the voters?
Yes, I believe so.
We'd have to approve doing a referendum.
Right. At 6.3?
We have until January 25th, so we don't have to make that determination tonight.
Okay.
So if we determine that we're doing a referendum, are we doing it at 6.3?
Can it change?
Can it change?
Or is that removable now?
I think that's going to be pretty hard to do.
I don't, I don't know how you would.
It's not hard to do if you already had a 5.9 plan.
If Christiana doesn't approve this tomorrow, it's not going forward.
Is it anticipated that they would?
Five communities, like Mark said, the two communities feel they don't need to go back because they, their referendum was approved last April at 6.5, so they could come in at a lower amount. The other three communities have to approve the referendum language. Issues that I have, and Mark and I discussed it, one was the commission didn't even have the correct date. Again, are they prepared to truly go out for the referendum? You know, they're saying it has to be in by December 8th, which wasn't correct. We haven't seen the plans, which Mark did ask for. Kind of like you said, is it being forced rather than truly thought out and coming back with a thought-out proposal?
Is it going to be worded the same? I mean, I know we still.
Well, my question was, what is the wording that we're supposed to be approving? And Gene said, use the same language as last time, just put the new number in.
Right. But we discussed in here, in one of the discussions we had about bringing it to voters to say this is how much your tax dollars would go up.
Yeah, but I think that resolution has to be consistent with the municipalities. You can't be changing the language here for Cambridge versus the town of Christiana. You can't be changing the language here for Cambridge versus the town of Christiana, the town of Oakland.
No, we all, there's an agreement.
Yeah, it's the same.
I see.
But I asked them, I also asked them for bringing in qualified advisors. Not just the, um, the mill rate and, you know, the cost per hundred thousand, but also the legal, to make sure that this referendum question is drafted properly.
Right.
So far, I haven't received a, a response on that. So, that is my, my update on the referendum question. I'll know more tomorrow. There'll be, there'll be something. I, I just don't know now if Christiana would even have had the meeting, knowing what they know about the dates. It, it doesn't sound like they would have, but it was too late for them to cancel. So, I've, I've spoken with Mr. Cook, and I'm planning on being there at nine o'clock. And that may address the issues, because if one member decides not to do this, then this thing dies. It, it requires unanimous consent. All right? Okay, I'm gonna move on here. The bike trail, uh, are, you, you know what? We've got a couple of items here. Can we take care of these and, and then get back? Cause we're gonna go into closed session, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Can we move correspondence, upcoming meetings, and questions to staff? Items ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen up?
Not fourteen and fifteen.
Uh, well, okay, open session, and then, yes, all right. Yeah, well, that's a tournament. All right, so can we move ten and eleven and twelve up? Would anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, then I'll deal with correspondence. Anything, Lisa?
No.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, we've got, uh, November thirtieth, economic development, December eighth, the library board, the thirteenth, plan commission, the fourteenth, joint law enforcement, uh, village board meeting on the fourteenth, the twenty-first, water and sewer, and then we've got a special planning commission meeting and personnel and public works. It'll be determined at a future point. Anything else? Any other meetings? All right. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items. I see that you have on here, foundation grant request. So, um, we need to be looking at items?
Yep, if there's items, I'll work with staff to, if there's, um, requests, the grant phone, for the foundation has to be in by the end of the year, so we can look at what we'd like to request. So, if anybody has ideas, suggestions, forward them on to me. I'll work with staff to see items as well.
All right. I have one, but I'll, I'll shoot it to you. Those bricks on Main Street. Messing around with that. All right, um, no, B, there is no village board meeting here.
Oh, wait, I have a request for the next agenda item. You had talked about the lease for the concrete slab?
Yes, um, we're working through some stuff. I did let Lindsay know that, and we're looking at it. So, we'll get some answers, so.
I have a question to the, the plan commission. Was that about what Chuck wanted?
Um
Mr. Faisal? Was that what he was referring to?
And I'm checking with the building inspector, like the glass. I don't think we need a plan commission to approve him changing out the glass and so forth.
Does that with this special plan commission as well?
We had talked at the last meeting about having one on the vineyard subdivision, but we're waiting until we get the meetings in and know what we're
Okay, cool.
Okay. All right, um, no village board meeting on the twenty-eighth of December. But there will be a water and sewer on the twenty-first, so we have that. And then, um, we're gonna be going into closed session. Before we do, Chris, I would like to give to you your, uh, your official, I think you've got a, your color is off on yours.
Oh.
Where'd you get that?
Um, I, I was able to, to get that from Public Works.
Thank you, Chris.
I, did you order one?
No, I got the mail today.
Oh, it was in the mail. I'm like, I ordered it. I hadn't seen it come in.
So, now I have two.
Yes.
No, that one's
That one's just paper that's in there.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, Chris had made one in paper.
Oh.
Come in yet, so.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.